Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, July 25th, 2022. Those in attendance, myself, Russell Fox, Vice Chairman Doug Mogul, and Clerk Jason Perone. Our CAO Carl Steinhardt is not with us tonight, but we do have Administrative Assistant Robin Solak with us. Before we begin, if we could all please stand.
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undaunted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The first thing on the agenda is public comments. This is, gives anyone an opportunity to make a statement to the board. If it's not on the agenda, so if there's anybody here in this room that'd like to do that, I'd ask you to please stand and state your name and address. Is there anyone here in the room who'd like to make a public comment? And I'm going to ask you, please come to the front and use the microphone because the acoustics are bad.
Michelle Pratt, 152 Berkshire. So I wanted to comment, I know there's been a lot of issues about the North Pond property and obviously I feel really responsible for, you know, helping to keep that property clean and maintained. And so I'm hoping, I know you guys are really working on that. So I was hoping the boards and committees could come up with like a precise problem solving statement, you know, looking at, and we can't get data, data, but trying to figure out the who's doing what and when, where, to focus our efforts. Obviously, nobody has extra time or money to be chasing after things and our problems. So we've been trying to go over on the weekends and on Mondays to look at the property to see what's where. And I know some people in the crowd have been doing that too. Most of the trash and things like that is kind of by the rope swing. There's almost never trash on the beach, but there's definitely paper up in the woods there in different places. I mean, I just, I don't know how we're going to deal with that. Like you can't, we talked about what cameras down there, but I don't know how you would even do that because it's a brief act that's occurring out in places. But I don't know if that would help. I feel like the only thing that would really help with that would be a porta potty. And I know that's against the conservation restriction. So I don't know if there's any way we can advocate with the state to get them to move on that and maybe put one on the property like down by your Kings Beach area or at least definitely at the top parking lot area and maybe encourage people to use that. But, you know, I've said before, if anything CRC can do to help, that we would like to do that. I don't want people approaching other people, but I think if it's, if volunteers are coached in a way to know how to do it very non-confrontationally, like the police department coaches people how to approach it and just say, hey, just letting all the property is being watched and we all need to take care of it. We're all responsible if you want to use it, it's got to be kept up and all that. We'd be happy to promote whatever, you know, you want to promote over there. And then also, obviously, we mentioned the cleanup that we'd like to help with that and already have been doing some of that. Also, we had a member recently approached me that has a company that sells, you know, masks and gloves and things like that. And we have to give them a name whilst volunteers that are going over to clean and stuff like that. So whatever we do, please tell us now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak under public comments? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak under public comments?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Marisa Cook Obregón. I live at 126 South Loomis Street. Before I go any further, I'd like to ask if the agenda points at 6:05 and 6:15, we'll discuss the methodology and process for reappointment or appointments? If so, I will refrain from making the comment.
At 6:05, we have review and make reappointments or appointments to boards and committees, department heads and/or town officers as shown on the attached list to the agenda.
Will that discuss the methodology or process that is employed by the Select Board to go through that appointment?
I mean, public comments is for you to make a comment. It's not really a question and answer period. And I'm not quite sure what you're asking anyway. So why don't you go ahead and make your comment and then we'll go from there.
Sure. Mr. Fox. So my comment is the following, and the reason why I'm asking or making a comment about methodology and processes, I would just like to see if there's any sort of outline apart from the Select Board protocols that are on the town website as to how this process works. Because back on March 21st, pardon me, Mr. Mogul had discussed, I'm so sorry. Oh, I'm very sorry about that. Mr. Mogul had discussed, I think I need a glass of water, so I will refrain from making my comment. I'm so sorry. Apologies. Thank you for the opportunity, though.
Anyone else on Zoom that would like to make a public comment? Anyone?
I'm seeing nobody else.
Okay. All right. Then we're going to 6:05, review and make reappointments. The C A O and I put together a list of ones that don't come under your, I want to call it a protocol, under your plan of action, Mr. Mogul. So I'm going to read them off and see if we can't try to knock off some of our appointments so that we can get caught up. I know that I've said this in the past, I'm going to say it again. We're being extremely transparent and careful in making sure that everyone gets an opportunity to talk about, so anybody interested in appointments. First thing I have is alternate building inspector, Robert Sullivan, one-year appointment, alternate building inspector, mutual aid, Arthur Waller, alternate gas and plumbing inspector, Stan Braska, alternate gas and plumbing inspectors, Glenn Rida. So if I could have a motion on those.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. The next one I have is municipal hearing officer, Carl Steinhardt. I'd like to have a motion on that.
No, especially since he's not here. So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Next one I have is Department of Public Works, Randy Brown.
Director.
Director.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Next one, Director of Assessment, Sue Gore.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. On to page two. DPW supervisor, Richard Bozak.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Next one I have is gas and plumbing inspector, Stanley Brown.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
I'm going to go back to page one to make sure I didn't, I apologize. On the alternate gas and plumbing inspector, I said Stan Braska. It was Stanton Braska. So if we could amend that vote.
So moved as amended.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. I apologize for that. Graves Officer, John Andrews.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. We're going to go down to all the individuals on Local Emergency Planning Committee. We just had a change from Tom Fitzgerald to Alex White. And then we have, oh, I, Jason Perone, and Police Doug Mogul, Carl Steinhardt, Charles Dunlap, Russell Anderson, Richard Spanawetz, Brett Banish, Mark Siegel, Randall Brown, Cindy Sullivan, Jennifer Willard, Stephen Presner. Since you're on there, Doug, will you make a motion?
So moved.
I will second it. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Going to the next page.
Do you want to go back to the Health Director?
Did I miss that?
Yes, sir.
Where is it?
Right below the Graves Officer.
Okay.
No pun intended.
Health Director.
Alex White.
Alex White.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. All right. I'm continuing, I should have continued with Local Emergency Planning Committee. There's other people on the back page. Joshua Towes, Karen Zork, John King.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Master Plan Advisory Committee, Doug Mogul. You'll have to make that.
Motion.
I will second that motion. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye. Okay. Parking ticket hearing officer, Michelle Hill.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, John Goddard.
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 So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Sealer of weights and measure, it's an agreement we have with the city of Westfield. So I don't know why we need to.
We can strike this.
We can strike that. There's no need for that because that's under mutual agreement. So we're going to go down to Special Assistant, DPW, Richard Grinnells.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Supervisor Building and Grounds, David Sutton.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Tree Warden and Mock Inspector, Randall Brown.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Wiring Inspectors, I'm going to read all three names. Robert Johnson, Louis Barelli, and Ronald Diddy. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. That's all I had on the list for tonight. We're gaining slowly but surely. All right. Our next appointment is at 6:15. So we have a couple minutes. If the, I saw Sue. Okay. In the county, if you guys want to get a seat up here, we're going to knock off a couple of things and then we'll be ready to have that meeting. Okay. So I'd like to acknowledge payroll, payables warrant number 2302B dated 7/12/22 in the amount of $586,582.25. Acknowledge special payables warrant number 2303B dated 7/14/22 in the amount of $5,114.22. Acknowledge payroll warrant number 2302 dated 7/19/22 in the amount of $324,195.58. I need a motion to approve the open session minutes of 7/11/22.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Accept the resignation of Brian Franco from the Conservation Commission.
Make a motion to accept the resignation and post.
Seconded. Okay. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. To recognize the resignation of Southwick representative to the Regional School Committee, Jonathan Shance.
So moved.
Seconded. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Accept a donation.
Point of order, Mr. Shance. Just for everyone's clarification, the resignation of Brian Franco, we post, we'd accept applications for that position for the balance of Mr. Franco's term, which I don't have in front of me. For the school committee, that's a posted, will be posted and is a joint appointment of the Select Board and the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School Committee.
Southwick members.
Southwick members for the entire balance of Mr. Shance's term, just to be clear. So there's a big difference in a local appointment versus a regional appointment like that under the agreement we have, the regional agreement. Thank you, Mr. Shance.
No, thank you, Mr. Mogul, for pointing that out. Okay. And we will check with Board of Directors to find out what, where Mr. Franco was. Yeah. Okay. I have 6:15, so we are having a joint meeting with the Board of Health. We need to appoint someone to fill the vacancy of Jess Oldiga, who resigned. I have one candidate submitted something, it was Jeanie. Is Jeanie here tonight? She's on.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Jeanie, if you'd like to state your name and address and give us a few reasons why we should consider you, please.
Jeanne Nielsen, 172 Fred Jackson Road. I've been associated with the Board of Health as their secretary and elected member for about 30 years. So there's been a lot going on, there's changes. And I feel I have the ability to fulfill one more year up until the next election in May, the position.
Thank you, Jeanne. Sue, you're the chairperson. Would you like to make any comment?
Chairperson.
Okay. The county, anything?
We will welcome Jeanne back to our board.
Mr. Mogul, any comments?
Relative inexperience aside. Jean's awesome.
No, no comment. All right. I'll accept a nomination then?
So moved.
Okay. Well, it's a roll call vote. I'll give you guys courtesy to your board.
To Braska, yes. And to Jean, yes.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Jean, thank you very much for stepping forward. You know the routine, you have to get sworn in.
Yes, I will. Thank you very much for your confidence in me for fulfilling the position. Everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up, Jean.
See you at the next meeting.
It's a joint appointment to fill a vacancy for that board. What was that? It's a joint appointment to fill a vacancy for, yeah. I see you elected. I don't know if it's always the face. I didn't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. I did official. All right. Here are the, our next appointment is until 6:30 where we're going to reopen the liquor hearing. So we're going back to see if we can't knock off a few more things. All right. Did we already do the donation?
No, I stopped.
Okay.
After what I apologized.
Okay. Accept the donation from Christ Church United Methodist to the Cemetery Commission in the amount of $5,000. Need a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second to motion. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. I think most people know that the Christ United Methodist has closed their church and they've made many very generous donations about the community to different nonprofits. And this was a nice one for our Cemetery Commission. And it's unrestricted, $5,000. Authorized tie and bond agreement for services to mitigate hazardous materials at the Old Fire Association Building.
So moved.
Seconded. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. And this is just the agreement to begin that process. I had the amount somewhere, I believe it was $7,000. Is that correct, Mr. Mogul?
I don't have it right.
I don't have it.
They made it last night. I don't have it exactly.
I, yes, it is. Here's the $7,000. Okay. And that'll begin the process of decommissioning the town structure. And currently with the report we got, it'll be eventually torn down. Okay. Next thing is a application for a one-day liquor license. It's for the Southwick Inn for their annual block party. I'm looking quick. It is for August 6th. They're looking for a license from 12:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Entertainment license from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM and in their parking area at the Southwick Inn. This is something that's been going on for many years. Any discussion? Okay. I am going to make the motion to approve this license. You'd like to second it?
I will second it.
Okay. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. We're going to sign this.
Mr. Chair, did you have a candidate coming in at 6:05 for the historical?
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. Let's sign this really quick.
Just before you were on a pretty good roll. I did notice that due to my relative inexperience. I want to bring it up.
Nope. When I'm on a roll, just jumped in. Because I did those other, is, now where did I leave? Is Richard Marcel here? Is Mr. Richard on Zoom? Or Linda McQuaid? Were they both invited, Rob?
It was on Thursday and Friday, so I'm not sure who was in touch with them.
All right. All right.
Come back.
Right. Again, we're going to err on the side of caution and make sure that they're both asked to join us for the next meeting. Can you make them know that, please, Rob? Okay. Right. Approve the liquor license. All right. Mass DOT notification, Small Bridge Program Design Grant for Granville Road. Tuttle Brook is, is Randy Brown here? Randy, come on up, use that microphone because this is good news. Randy Brown, DPW.
Randy Brown, DPW Director. So as you alluded to, we applied for a grant through the Small Bridge Program to, for designing permits for a toll-free place like Granville Road crossing Tuttle Brook, which switches near the hillside road intersection. So we applied for a grant, this was a year or years ago, on Loomis Street, and we were successful. Let's see that again. Appreciate it.
And this is one of many applications that you've put in and.
We put in four applications. Fortunately, two of them were not in our favor. So this is one that has found our way. And I'm still waiting on one more application for a work on Hudson Drive in St. Louis.
Randy, thank you very much. Thank you for your excellent work. Need a motion to accept this grant?
So moved.
Seconded. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. All right. Next is a Pioneer Valley Planning Commission financial warrant number three in the amount of $333.14 for their work on the green energy program. So I need a motion to approve that bill.
So moved.
Seconded. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Rob, is that just for the chairman to sign?
Yes.
Okay. So we amend that motion, Mr. Mogul, for the chair to sign there?
Sure.
So, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Okay. The next is a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest. It's being filed by Russ Anderson, our fire chief. And the reason why he's filing this is we're currently having an assessment for the deputy fire chief position. And Mr. Anderson has worked with that company in doing assessments in other communities. So he wants to disclose the appearance of a conflict of interest. So if we could make a motion to, that we received that and then he'll file that with the town clerk.
So moved.
Seconded. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. All right. And that's donations to the Southwick Animal Shelter from Patricia Turner, Linda Lightner, and the Summer House. In total is $125. Thank you to all those people. So I need a motion to approve those donations.
So moved with our thanks.
Seconded. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. Also got a donation of $800 from Andrew and Diane Gale to the Selectman's gift account to replenish it for monies that we used over at the, or it is going to be used over at the town common. So I need a motion to approve that $800 donation with our thanks.
So moved and thank you.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. All right. I need a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for the amount of $116,214 to administer the fiscal '21 CDF Community Development Block Grant.
So moved.
Seconded. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. Okay. All right. Next thing I have is a motion to approve the Fire Department Station Project requisition number four, change order number one for Silk Town Roofing Incorporated. This is, we're almost done with, the roof is all done, all the work is done except for some coating of some gutters. And we might have one small more bill after this, but we're going to be voting to release to Silk Town $157,421.61.
So moved.
Seconded. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye. And like I said, there should just be one more small, much smaller bill and then that project will be completely done. All right.
Mr. Chairman, the next item, I think it's really a formality, but with the appointment of Alex White as the new Health Director, he was a, the Health Director is a stake of the Short Term Rental Subcommittee. And there was just a little confusion as to who is the appointing authority for that board, actually a planning board subcommittee, but just, probably should just take a motion of this board because this board authorized the sub to change the membership of the Short Term Rental Subcommittee from Mr. Fitzgerald to Mr. White, reflecting the change in the Health Director, which you just did five minutes ago.
Okay. If you want to make that motion, so moved. Seconded. Okay, we'll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Morgan, aye.
Jason Coron, aye.
And Alex is on another board.
Yep. And now your honor system started.
And now we're on our 6:30, so. I am gonna be opening up the liquor license hearing that we continue to, a time and date specified at 6:30 on the 25th of July, 2022. So the hearing is now officially reopened. Just sign that real quickly. Okay. All right, I apologize. We received two additional pieces of information. One was a, an email that was sent on Friday, July 22nd, approximately 3:01 p.m. It's three individuals who are opposed to the granting of a license. They do not, do not, they're, do not change the zoning here. We do not need this, nor do we want this. And it's Sandra A. McGann, Joyce Spear, and Michael McGann. And they say we will be attending the meeting. Are they attending the meeting? Did you have anything else that you'd like to add? Okay, if, I'm gonna ask you, if you could come to the front and use the microphone. If you cannot, we will bring the microphone to you. Is it easier to bring the microphone to you?
I hope to hear from my housing project, the peace and the fire. In a short time, I realized I had to wear an orange jacket to hang my clothes because of shots fired in the back. I have come through and seen changes in Southwick, some good, some bad. Going to my mailbox is a challenge by Jackson Road. There was a blind spot to the right of me and a blind spot to the left of me. On many three, I have a cane. I can halfway across the street. Many times, I cannot hear a car coming. Fortunately, they have good pipes. I have had trouble backing out of my car because of blind spots. I miss some of the old times in Southwick. I don't know where we're going. But I hope it's not too far that we lose what we have here. Because it is a treasure. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have that document. We also had a, a document from, I believe, your, your attorney, Freda. Okay. I, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but they basically talked about the, the first part of this hearing, why they feel it's in compliance. And they're also talking about the issue that was raised by the attorney from one of the other neighbors that was opposed to the granting of the license. If that document is available, all documents are available for review. The other thing that we said that we would check on was the issue raised by the attorney concerning, I believe it was Section 12. I don't know if that's the proper, whole proper terminology. That was sent to town council. Town council did review it. He felt that there was no right answer. He felt that was a judgment called that if, in fact, this board granted the license, that would be something that would be decided by the ABC Commission. So. And he told me that he would have his law clerks continue researching and get back to me before tonight's hearing if, if there was anything different. No one has gotten back to me, so that would be the information I'm giving the board. All right. Since this hearing is open, I'm going to ask, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue here tonight?
Mr. Chairman, if it's attorney Steve Miller for the applicant.
And if you want to go into more of that.
Just a couple of points. I don't, I don't need to go into too much detail, but just a couple of points I'd like to make. But in, in the attachment to that has the Chapter 185 zoning regulations. And I think the, I think the issues raised by the opponent, the attorney for the opponent, talking about it's not suitable and it creates a nuisance and will create traffic and all that. The, the zoning board went into great detail, great detail and, and investigation on that and felt that this was suitable, that they could have an alcohol and they, they amended the special permit to do that. And just as I would like to point out that this an issuance of license to, you know, a commercial recreational location in the R40 zone is, has been done in Southwick with the Edgewood Golf Club, the Ranch Golf Club, the former Southwick Golf Club and the American Legion Post. So this is not out of the ordinary. In fact, this particular request would be far less impactful than any of those since the, the the facility closes at dusk. And the, as we said earlier, they have an average of 200 to 250 rounds per week, which is significantly less than any of the, the other facilities that I mentioned. Also, we don't have any facilities. So when you come in to play, finish your round of golf to go into a building and watch TV and, and consume alcoholic beverages and have something to eat, so it's far less impactful. I would just point out, and I, and I agree with town council that this would be, there's no question that the ABCC, if this board finds this appropriate, that the ABCC would look into this. And, and I echo what the Chief of Police said that, you know, after reviewing the application, I found nothing to indicate the applicants were unsuitable. The question remains if a disc golf, this golf course falls in the category of a seasonal license. I would recommend the board approve it as submitted, leaving it to the ABCC interpretation. And I, and I wouldn't suggest that the planning board usurp your role to determine the fitness and character of the applicant and the, the fact that they are qualified to operate at this location. I think we've given you information as to the fitness and character of Mr. McManus and Mr. Gardner and the other owners of the premises and their experience to operate. And also the operational controls that we would put in place to make sure that there is no impact, negative impact on the neighborhood. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a statement?
There's a young lady in the back, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If, if you could, the acoustics are bad here. If you could please state your name and address one more time, please.
Joyce Spear, 39th Red Jackson Road. And it has to do with the Brown family that's put in the restroom chair. Because they were supposed to do that. If you're gonna have 120 people drinking, where are the rest rooms? Are you gonna have porta potties? What are you gonna do?
Okay.
Who's gonna answer?
Well, we're gonna, if, if you're done, then we're gonna move to the next.
You're not gonna answer?
No, no, I'm gonna ask them if they'd like to answer. But I'm gonna ask you to relinquish that, please. Thank you. Before we start answering questions, I'm gonna ask, is anyone else would like to speak on this issue?
Russ. Shouldn't refer to many times. Appreciate the opportunity. My name is Rob Green. I have five businesses. It's like the maybe it's kind of, three homes. I live at 461 Vouch Road in my suburb of Connecticut at this time. And I played the game and I've played at the home bridge of states. The one thing that I'm most proud of, living here, participating as a young man 50 years ago in my first business in the parade and a short time ago for the birthday of Southwick, 250 years. When you drive into this town, you can leave here and drive 500 miles and not see another sign that says a recreational town. And if there is one thing that this country needs, is the recreation for young and for older guys like myself and ladies, it, it's a place where you can go, enjoy yourself, have a fun time, and you don't need to be the best at it. My closing statement goes like this. Freda Brown and that facility, when I went through it compared to the one in Daytona, Wisconsin, and California, is second to none. One of the most beautiful, natural places to play a sport. And I think the opportunity that's been given, as they say, build it and it will come. I hope that Freda has that chance. I'm very proud to be here, very proud to speak. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in this room that would like to make a statement? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a statement? Ms. Thornton? Ms. Thornton? Would you like to make a statement?
Sure. Jessica Thornton, 352 Granville Road. Good evening, everyone. I would just like to echo the comments that were just mentioned from the gentleman in the audience. I look for more and more recreational opportunities for myself and for my family here in town. And something that comes into play in our decision-making is whether or not there is a place to go to the restroom and whether there's food and drink available. And the opportunity to go someplace that is nearby, that is natural and part of our community's history and our growing history is something that I think that the Select Board should be in support of. So I hope that you approve this application and leave the finer details to the ABCC if necessary. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom?
Not that I see, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Would the applicant want to speak or answer any questions that were raised at this meeting?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman and members, the, the total rounds per week, the average are 2 to 250. And obviously, as the weather gets a little darker when we close at dusk. So the question of 120 people drinking at the premises, just we're, we're only having on a maximum week, 250 people for the entire seven days. So we certainly have adequate facilities, bathroom facilities at, at the porta potty facilities at the premises.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other comments.
Bob Bearable, 46, John Mason Road.
Bob, you've got a loud voice, but if you could still use the microphone, please.
Bob Bearable, is that him? Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Bob Bearable, 46, John Mason Road, that across the street from the proposed license. I'd like to make a comment about the nature of the business of disc golf, which my wife and I are not opposed to in any, in any sense or fashion. We wish them well and success in the operation of the disc golf course. Problem we have is the, the use of a liquor license, which changes the business model of the golf course. Been a lot of comments made about the level of play. It's been overstated. I have documentation that indicates how many cars and how many players occur on a typical week. It's not to be confused with a successful tournament that's held now and then and some events that are held now and then that would boost the, the numbers of the average amount of play. Don't confuse the number of rounds played with the number of, number of people that play. Two different things. On average, I'll give you an example, this is just an anecdotal number. Yesterday afternoon at 2:30, there were three cars in the lot. Typically, you can have anywhere between four and 12 cars in a lot on a day. On a good day, you might have 15 where there's a, where there's a league being played. Might be 20, 25 on a league night. But generally speaking, play is scant. When this particular motion was made to try to get a liquor license across the street, it was done under the radar. There were no hearing held. The original, original special permit that was issued had lapsed. It had never been renewed. It was supposed to be renewed annually, it never was. The planning board approved without a hearing the the revision to the special permit, removing a number of terms that when the permit was originally issued, were suitable to everybody involved. All the neighbors, the dozens and dozens of people who had been opposed to other uses of the property. Everybody was okay with the way the special permit was originally issued, which specifically said no alcohol to be consumed on the site. So I, I would ask this board, if it was okay and it was appropriate to issue a permit and acknowledge that alcohol on a site was not a good thing to happen five years ago, why is it okay today? When the applicant appeared before the planning board in February of 2021, again, I say under the radar, because it was no hearing. The proposal was to, to add additional features to their offerings such as bocce, cornhole toss, and other events that essentially would turn the disc golf facility into an outdoor bar. Because these, these kinds of offerings are to the outdoors what bars on the inside offer. They offer darts, shuffleboard, and other games to keep people there. It's not a matter of people coming off the disc golf course and offering them a beer. This is a, this is an attempt to change the business model. As opposed to saying, when you want to compare the other golf courses in town that have a liquor license, the other golf courses in town have liquor license as true amenities to golf. They also offer frickin' more buildings for restaurant facilities and sanitary facilities as well. They don't operate out of sandy cans. They offer a menu with a kitchen and sanitary devices to prepare the food. Putting alcohol at this site will change the business model. And this is what the applicant is looking to do. Change the business model. Not offer a few, a, a couple of beers for the few numbers of people that are coming off their rounds of disc golf. And I have documentation as to how much play occurs in July and August, June, July and August. I'm opposed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna ask one more time. Is there anyone else that would like to make any? We got a hand going up.
I'll use the microphone, although I don't think I need it, my voice is big enough.
But we still ask you to use it.
My name is Tony Marlowe, and I live at thirty-nine John Mason Road. That's her. She's my wife. In the eighteen months that I have been a resident here, I have listened to a lot of misinformation. The misinformation, and some of the misinformation I have reported to the board. We talk about traffic. And traffic is horrible. Well, I did a study on a weekend on John Mason Road. Fifty-five percent of the vehicles that were presented that passed the road were trucks. Now, if you wish to visit the site, there are normally one truck at the disc golf course, mostly cars. So, you know, the argument that the disc golf course is creating an overload of traffic is not accurate, and I would argue with that. I can prove that by my demonstration, and I'd be willing to do another traffic study. The second thing that has been discussed is the visibility of the residents at the lower end entering and leaving their driveway. Well, I looked at it pretty closely. Most of the residents had large trees within five foot of the pavement at the end of their driveway. Now, they can't see cars because of the tree, not because of the disc golf course. And maybe they should petition the town to remove the trees from the easement. That'd be a solution. The third thing is, my father was a restaurateur and service. And I can attest to the fact that very few incidents occur when diligence is paid at the establishment. And the argument that, you know, we're gonna have drones flying up and down the road, it's just not accurate. If you study alcohol at all, you would find that an average person, average weight, average height, can handle one beer per hour. More than that, we start to get a little flaky. So the argument that I would make, I don't want to be sued, my wife doesn't want to be sued, is that the diligence associated with dispensing alcohol is something that has to be taken very seriously. And the argument that that isn't going to be done is not accurate. I have experience in that area. I can prove that experience. The fourth thing is that, which is interesting, is the hours of operation. The disc golf course closes at dark. I mean, you cannot see a disc at dark when you throw it without daylight. The establishment that would dispense any drinks, be they seltzer, water, which we dispense today, et cetera, we close at seven o'clock, regardless of the amounts, et cetera. In fact, you know, at seven o'clock, people are gonna hang around on picnic tables. And the reason that this is being done is that the patrons have asked for it. And, you know, I wish some of them were here to say, yeah, we'd like to do that, we'd like to commiserate with each other, which is part of the social atmosphere of the sport. So, you know, I get disturbed when I hear emotion versus fact being displayed. And I hear a lot of emotion, and I don't hear a lot of fact. I want to thank you all for your considerations.
Thank you. Another hand has gone up. Here we go. Come on forward, please.
Good evening, Carol Bearable, 46 John Mason Road. I live directly across from the entrance to the disc golf course. My bedroom window faces right out to the entrance. I see frequently to refute the fact that we close at seven o'clock does not happen. I see constant headlights coming out of that gate, which is not locked, which was originally part of the planning board's original requirements, was that the gate be locked at dusk. That is not happening. I see headlight after headlight after headlight coming out well after dusk, seven, eight, sometimes nine o'clock at night. So to refute the fact, those that do not live directly across from it and have a direct view of that entrance and exit, that is incorrect statement.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna try it again. Is there anyone else that would like to make a statement before we make a motion to close this hearing? If you, we will get you the microphone. I'm gonna ask you to state your name and address again, okay? Thank you.
I just want to ask the gentleman over there. Where is he?
Where you are at now?
Yeah.
I live at 461 Vouch Road in Southfield, Connecticut.
Up in Connecticut.
Yes, so good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I have to ask one. Is it porta potties that we're gonna get, or are we getting rest rooms?
I believe that was answered, ma'am. I believe the attorney said they have porta potties. I believe that was his answer, ma'am. All right. One more time. I see nothing. I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moblen, aye.
Jason.
Okay, this hearing has been closed. The board prepared to discuss and make a motion at this time, or you want to take it under advisement? Leave it up to the board.
Your pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
There's a lot of stuff that's come out, and especially when I read this, I'd like to dig further.
Okay, then we will table this through a decision to our next meeting. Is that agreeable?
It's agreeable.
Does that give you enough time to? Yeah, okay. All right. Moving on. We thank everybody for attending, and you're welcome to stay. We have to finish our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're under new business. We already talked about Alex White going on rental. I have a couple of new things. One, I had other people interested in the historical. And Mr. Steinhardt has raised the question, the number of people that can be on historical. And if, in fact, we find out there is a limit, I'd like to know if this board would consider associate members to the historical commission like we have on other boards. If you have no problem, I'd refer that to town council. I have no objections.
I would never look to turn away someone who's looking to give service to the town.
Okay, so, Robin, you could make a note at that, that we're gonna review that with town council to see, in fact, if there is a limit on the number of people that can be on the historical commission. And number two, if we can add associates to that, and what's the procedure to do that? Number two, I met with get my notes, people, so I don't mess up. I met with the chief of police, fire chief, Cindy Sullivan, Park and Rec, concerning the issue that they raised about liquor at Wally Park. We reviewed it. Town, oh, town council was there also at the meeting on Zoom. He stated that, in fact, that it's illegal to consume alcoholic beverages on town property. The exceptions being where we have nonprofits for special events, i.e. concerts or the car show, things like that, or the cultural council that we have out in front here. You can do that. So by statute, you can't. If, in fact, you had a private event with a caterer, then you could possibly do it if you granted some sort of special license. But that's still kind of iffy. And then you have the liability issues that go with that. So what, the meeting ended with all that information being shared, and Ms. Sullivan was gonna take that back to the Park and Rec Board to let them digest that, to see if, in fact, they want to go further with any issue. So it's in their ballpark now, okay? I've already stated my opinion, and I'll state it again. I think there's a serious liability issue. I'm not comfortable with it. You're talking about alcohol right next to a playscape with kids, private parties. I just can see too many problems. But that's my opinion.
Well, I thank you for looking into it. I mean, it was a question that was asked, so I brought it to the board as commissioners to look into it. I appreciate you taking the lead and coming back to the Park and Rec, which is the controlling entity for Wally Park in the first place. But thank you very much for doing that.
So, again, it's in their ballpark, and we'll see what they want to do. And then we can discuss it further. Number three, I went out with the Harbor Masters class chief of police. We toured the entire Congammon Lake. We were going over the issue at one forty-one Congammon Road. Then we proceeded down to North Pond. I can tell you, my observation and the chief's observation is, especially mine, since the last time I went down there was in the fall, we got some issues, we got some challenges there. It's, they've taken down ropes and over the weekend before, and when we got down there, there was ten more, you know, in different spots. And it's not just in one location, it's all over. You can see the pathways that are being developed, especially on the sides of the banks, where, obviously, if it continues, we're gonna have erosion problems, things like that. So we did review that. One thing, and it's not related to the issue at North Pond so much, is Lake's management has talked about some of the conservation issues on the Connecticut side. And I think the chief of police came up with what I thought was a great idea to reach out to Southfield, and I know you've been reaching out and kind of our liaison, is to see if we couldn't have some sort of liaison between conservation commissions so that they can understand our concerns when people are working on the water. Mr. Grinnell feels that the Southfield Conservation Commission sometimes doesn't give it the attention that we would give if, in fact, it was something happening in Southfield. I don't know if you want to work on that, Doug?
Be glad to.
And we could reach out to the conservation commission. I didn't know if our coordinator was here. I did see Sabrina. Sabrina, I don't know if you think that would help the situation, if we had some coordination, because, like I said, Mr. Grinnell is concerned about some of the actions that they take, or actions they don't take. So maybe you could go back to your board and say that if it's all right with your board, we'd like to reach out to Southfield and see if that isn't something we could establish. So you'll go back and notify your board? Appreciate that. All right, the next thing I had was I am working on a TIF with Wally Computer Associates, along with the CAO in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's a tax increment financing. For anyone that likes to know what it is. Inga got it. You got that. So we're working on that. Obviously, I think this board's position is one that we would like to see businesses locate in the town of Southwick and not go to other communities. And that's the purpose of a TIF agreement, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts agrees with us too. So we're working on that, and we'll continue to work on that. It would still require a town meeting, so it would be up to the voters to decide whether or not to offer that agreement with Wally Computer Associates. So, just to bring you up to date. The last thing I had, MMA, Mass Municipal Association, reached out, they were doing a promo, a picture of our, pictures of our town, and something about our town in thirty-five words or less. So I took it upon myself to do that and give that to the CAO to digest and edit accordingly. So, obviously, I found it very difficult to describe the town of Southwick in thirty-five words or less. But I figure it's good marketing. So those are the only things that I have under new business. Smoke, do you have anything under new business?
A couple things. One is last week, Tuesday, I think, I had a meeting with Comcast regarding an Internet Essentials program that they run. Affordable connectivity program in Internet Essentials. It's a thirty-dollar subsidy that's available to folks that qualify under various different federal programs for a reduction in their connectivity costs. And that can also include mobile, if that's bundled through Comcast. They also gave me some good background information on some other towns that had done municipal broadband and hadn't done very well, shockingly. And I also have, next topic is I have a meeting this week, Wednesday, I believe, with Westfield G and E, with Mr. Sullivan, with an outline of some numbers that they're going to present. Then we're going to call another meeting of the high-speed internet sub, analyze those numbers, and then bring a finding, hopefully bring a finding back to this board for further action. And lastly, I guess it's new business, though it was last Saturday, want to commend the people of Southwick, the Southwick Civic Fund, for just a fantastic event on Saturday evening with the fireworks display and the great coming out of a lot of folks from the community, like a good time was had by all. Thank you to the police and fire departments for making sure everybody stayed safe and ushering traffic in and out of there. Place cleared out rather quickly, and it was a great event, so thank you. And lastly, just to the North Pond piece, I also went out there on July third with Lieutenant Banish and observed much of the same. And I know when they were going out the next day to take down the rope swings, there were grills halfway up the hill. And there had to be, I don't want to guess at the number, but forty would be a low estimate. Boats in a row tied up at the shore, and people in various elevations up and down the the entrance to that preserve. It's a real issue, and we're gonna have to put our heads together in order to figure out how to solve it. That's it from there.
I have nothing at this time. Okay, then we're going to old business, and the first thing under old business is North Pond. We are organizing a meeting with all the parties involved, i.e. the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Fish and Game, Conservation, Select Board, Police, Fire, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to see if we can't find some sort of solution to the challenges we're facing down there. Like I said, I think it's what I observed is Like I said, I, I think it's, what I observed is more concerning than even last fall. But one thing I, I thought of is, and I was gonna suggest even before we have this meeting, I think one of the problems is, it's not supposed to be a beach down there. And I think if we stop referring to the shoreline as a beach, it might send a signal to people that this is not a place to come and swim. You know, there are no lifeguards. It's, it's, it's written up right in the order of conditions with fish and game, that there would be none there. So I'm, I'm gonna ask everybody on this board, please not to refer to it any longer. Refer to it as the shoreline of North Pond Conservation Area. And I, and I think that'd be good. Sabrina, if you could take that back to your board also, you know, as a suggestion. So, when the meeting is set, they're working on dates now. It looks like it won't be until the last week of August, the last email I saw, because of the number of people we're getting together. All right, town hall HVAC design work is almost completed, you know, so, and that's just the design. It's not the actual project itself, just the design. Sewer system I M A with the city of Westfield, we're setting up the first official meeting. Again, attorneys are going back and forth with dates and times and places, but that should take place sometime in the month of August to have the first official meeting. Board and committee procedures to notify and appoint members in the process. Do you think we still need to have that on the, under old business? I think we know that we have a process in place.
I think we're fine right now. I think it could come off.
Okay.
And then, and also regarding the town hall HVAC, I had a conversation with Mr. Sutton. Happy birthday, Davis. Today's his birthday, by the way. They had, we had allocated, I think it was six or eight thousand dollars, six thousand-ish dollars, to install some equipment into the existing HVAC for virus prevention and reduction within the town hall itself. My understanding is that equipment has arrived, and that they might have altered their plan, and they were gonna wait to install that until the HVAC project was complete or as part of that project. I asked David to reach out to Carl, but to please go ahead and install that equipment anyway. Even if they have to take it out and put it back in again, given the current situation and what they're talking about for the fall, it seems like that would be prudent.
I think that's an excellent suggestion.
So I'll, I'll follow up with Dave and Carl to make sure that that's actually happened, because the stuff's here. And then as the other piece, yeah, I think we can strike this from here and continue our discussion.
You got that one, Robin? Okay, all right. Next thing, deputy fire chief recruitment's process, as I referred to before. We have hired a firm to do an assessment center on the two local candidates. So that process will begin. So hopefully, within a month or so, we will be getting some sort of information. And from there, we can continue on and hopefully select our new deputy chief, so that when Mr. Anderson resigns, retires, and Rick Stanwitz takes over as chief, we can have a deputy chief right there behind him, so that it's a smooth transmission. Citizens awareness of boards and committee openings. I, I think we should keep it there, because I think we're still having some problems. We talk about posting. We talk about Channel fifteen. We talk about everything else, but it's still, I have people coming up to me, well, I didn't know there was no thing, or, you know, how do you go about it? So I, I don't know. There, there's gotta be some, something else that we can do. I don't, I'm not sure what it is, but we announce it at town meetings. We announce it every single meeting that we're, we encourage people to apply. We'll have to do some brainstorming and see what happens. All right, that takes care of old business. So, any old business, Mr. Moblen?
Well, it's right in line with that, and I defer to you, Mr. Chair, how you wanna handle it. We now have, we have, and I believe it was what Ms. Cook Overgan was gonna speak about as well, though I don't know for sure, she stopped. But we interviewed Mr. Riordan. We now have three applicants for two positions. I believe we should bring the other two in, in fairness, at our next meeting if possible, or at your convenience, Mr. Chair, as you schedule the meetings, interview them for that position. We also have now a posting for a third spot, and I think we should continue to, you know, we, we put it out there that the position's vacant. Tell anyone that wants to apply to apply, and you'll have at least three applicants for three open seats, but that would be the process to follow in the interest of transparency and openness.
Right, and, and that's, without beating a dead horse, that's why I said we're, we're going about this. We're gonna be as transparent and open as possible, and we're gonna take as much time as necessary to make sure everyone has an opportunity to be heard. And that's, if we can set that up for the next meeting, you know, and we'll also review with the C A O any of the other committees that we haven't done yet and get those people in there. Maybe we can get them all in here at the next meeting and try to finish this thing up as quickly as possible. And so we're done in August before September first. Any other old business stuff? Okay, all right, then we will be going into executive session, not to reconvene. So I thank everybody for attending here and on Zoom, and have a good night. All right, we are going into executive session, not to reconvene. Motion to go in the executive session, so to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three, and Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, litigation matters and strategy for collective bargaining with town, accounting. Executive session regarding Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, two, three, Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, and Section two, move to go into executive session, conduct collective bargaining session with non-union personnel, not to reconvene in an open session. Move to go into executive session, conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and not to reconvene in an open session. Declare that the, the chair must declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to not reconvene in an open session. Chair must declare, move to go into executive session, discuss strategy, respect for collective bargaining, and that the chair move to go into executive session, discuss strategy, sessions and preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene in an open session. Move to go into executive session, discuss strategy, respect for litigation. That chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigation position of the body and not to reconvene in open session. Regarding Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, persons shall have the right against unreasonable substantial interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith toward damage. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
I can't vote no, right? Doug Moblen, aye.
Jason, aye. All right, we're moving into our room.